It looks weird.
We're supposed to literally charge.
Happy to the same good team.
It's dry and it's pretty good.
Thank you for checking.
Let me send Patterson if you need us in the invitation.
Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here today healthy ready to take on town business, pray to guide us and lead us in our decision-making process tonight. Open our hearts and open our minds and allow us to make decisions that are in the best interest of town, so our city.
Amen. George, your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To enhance a framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
Mr. Brown, have you do the reason statement?
Town City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community for diversity, innovation, and education, and a globally competitive society.
You both are there.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved to top second that the agenda be approved as written. All the papers have been on my side. All seven say right here and not much there.
Make a motion when you approve the consent agenda.
I just have, can we bring in item number 3.3 outside of consent agenda and discuss the purchase of the sign for $46,000? Is that okay? Can we move that out of the consent agenda?
What will we put it?
Can we put it up open for the gents so we can discuss it?
They can leave it to old business 5.2 for this townhouse signage art approval.
Seven.
Seven's. Yes, but then you're going to have to have, you're going to, in order to do that, you have to move all the budget ordinances to new business.
So which, which, there's multiple budget ordinances, which one?
Yeah, we're going to have to move the entire ordinance because it's often bound on one ordinance. Right, John?
Yeah.
You want to do the whole thing?
Yeah, I just want to discuss more openly, especially our constituents about the signs and how much it costs.
I, I think that we had early been in this process early on and you did have adequate time to redo the packet prior and ask question.
Other things that happened beforehand, things, new costs that have come up, we're talking about the Paul Ramsey Jones thing, over $30,000 on a floor epoxy covering. We know that we're considering demoing Paul Braxton building. I just don't know if it's in the town's best interest that we spend $46,000 on a digital sign. That may be like kind of a nice, pretty piece of jewelry, but may not be necessary. If, if I'm, if I'm correct, you still have to fill the position of communication specialist. Is that your job?
Yeah, we're in the process.
Okay, so that, I just, I want to discuss how something may be able to, you know, hopefully replace or supplement the other. I just like, my opinion, I just don't know if it's in the best interest of the town and taxpayers to spend that kind of money on a sign. I do agree, it's a good thing, but I just, we have other things that have transpired since we made the agreement, Mr. Matthews, regarding, you know, having Kimberly go forth looking, soliciting quotes. We've had no discussion since then, and that's, that's why I want to bring out a consent agenda.
And that's why that's what I'm moving everything out of that.
There's only two other items on there would be the money being re-appropriated to the general fund.
There's. They're cordoned back, the land is sour, he fought.
Right.
Is there a way to separate that out?
Yeah, 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 you can pass it without, without that $46,000 and, and if that's later on, I can have to.
So let me look at it.
You're able to separate it, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then what's the line item on 1.6? What's the line item for the, for the sign?
Section 3, maintenance buildings, the increase, decrease $46,000.
Yeah, last one. So can, can we make a motion to amend the consent agenda to take out the round line of section 3 and then move forward? And then we put that on another agenda? And then we just move on to the rest of it?
This, this is something that not only came, this didn't come from the board per se. The community has made a big effort in telling us that they do not know what's going on when. And so that is part of informing our community what we're doing, what we're doing, and how we're doing it. And so the message board is a part of that communication process. And I'm not comfortable at all with taking it off the agenda at this time. We can move it to another spot on the agenda, but to remove it, I'm not comfortable there at all.
Okay, let's see. There is a motion to move 3.3 to to make it 7.3 for old business, so there's a motion. Do you have a second? There's something to transfer.
Okay, all the paper of moving that to 7.3 and on the old business living on my side of that. All the polls have the same right.
No.
Motion there. Okay. Next item on is.
I'll go back and I'll remove, remove to pass the consent agenda minus 3.3.
Okay, wouldn't be the whole of 3.3?
No, the whole, the whole 3.3 had removed. Had moved the whole thing.
John said he's going to separate last.
Yeah, but it's not drafted that way. We can separate it after the fact that it's not drafted that way now. So to consider today, we have to move all of 3.3.
I didn't understand that something, maybe probably know the vote. I thought it was just looking at that part of the.
You can't, you can't separate it out now. So when, so when it comes up on our own business, it's going to be for approval as is. Because the whole language has been changed and we're separating it out.
Since I misunderstood, can we call another vote for none?
We can vote for it in its entirety under 7.3 if we move it to old business. But we have to approve of it in its current written form, correct?
If we're doing it today, right? I mean, if we're doing it, it would have to be redraft and rebought to do it separately, correct?
That's my understanding.
Well, I want to suggest during closed session, if John or John can amend that ordinance bringing back is suited for the sense of the old business today.
That works, that helps.
Oh, can we do that?
Sorry, not in the past.
Thank you.
All right, so, so can we, okay.
Maybe your motion on the board to approve the concern.
No, we're moving all of 3.3 to old business. Well, he's got to redraft during closed session, so when we get to 3.3, we can consider it as separate line items. But right now it was drafted.
Exactly. Okay, all right. I understand that.
Okay.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Then move in part second that we're through the consent agenda as my, letting me know on my, on my side of that. All opposed, having the same right, hearing none, must be carried.
Make a motion during closed session for some of the 43,000 of other case six.
Then move in part second that we go into closed session, according to statute, all in living by sound of that. All opposed, having the same right, hearing none. We'll be right back and talk. Not leaving.
Now, your friend Lymis comes back with his made a motion to come out of closing.
But the orange, we don't come out of closing session.
Thank you. We're taking that we kind of all the video that have been known by sign of that.
Aye.
All opposed having the same rights during motion carried.
Make a motion to ensure the family language is granted.
Fair.
So that move is right second that we approve the town managers employment agreement all in favor of our sign of that.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right. Hearing none motion carried ladies and gentlemen now I want to introduce you to our new town manager. Um, who got his name.
Yeah.
Should we come forward, state your name and address?
There's nobody.
Good evening, Lord. I'd like to continue to you on the very Wall Street. And my concern with the modern unit, we got quite some problems over there. And I would like, if people pound as good, try to have it for some of them. But we have this mosquito problem, it is tremendous. You can't no. No standing water in the dump. No way, no mosquitoes really red out there. Only place to find mosquitoes is around our neighborhood and set them water ditches that water setting. That the town haven't cleaned out. Where water will come flow flocking. So water coming off through the street. Every time it rains, I know the crawl spaces of those houses is full of them. Water just pools up, the ditch can't take the water. I think one of our commissioners had a deal go there for a short period of time, he can attest to what I'm talking about. And the neighbors over there. Every time if I say it rains heavily, those thing about promises being made, we're going to finish it out, the devil got cleaned out. So our flood problem is still there. And. I wanted the town to, you know, consider doing something to help us in our community. The law. Or entice the livelihood that we might enjoy our time. Sitting outside sometime, but right now we can't do it. And there's several other problems to enhance every look at it, once you get it and look, you'll see. But I would like another inspection or something to see that you can find the mosquitoes in the junkyard. I'm sure something like that, talking to be in my yard all the time.
Uh, thanks sir, uh, Mr. Hill, I did, we did talk about the ditches last week. We have a gentleman, uh, Dylan who now over public utilities of the news. Who's actually going to start that process, uh, and we did name track the street as one of the streets. What the problem was, first I've heard personally about the jumping org and what you always on there are. The mosquito problem period, and so I guess more we need to get somebody to actually throw out what's going on with that intersection.
If we had incident, third, and that wasn't the problem.
Okay, that wasn't the problem, did they tell us what the problem was?
I think so, there is.
We've had two surveys done.
Yeah, we've had two done and one on the next, and then two, you know.
But why?
Um, and you know, thought that really.
Okay, I'm reading ground, ready on site.
Yeah, okay.
Well, let's see what we can do to help alleviate the ditch problem and see what that does for us. As I stated, we did talk all of last week about that different problem already, so it should be coming your way very soon.
Okay, well, did you recognize Brown, Paul, say that there? Thought the the town that came out there to kick some water lines, they stopped them up. Okay?
You're happy.
All of them stopped them. Oh, my house, someone stopped them.
I thought it was a fool.
No, that's why I go into.
Okay, well, let's, you know, I don't want to have a session, let's see what we can do to kind of alleviate the problem. Then now, okay.
Is the hands still able to spray when you spray something?
No, no problem. No, no problem.
I know that they need to go to the neighborhood to spray at night and.
I think that's the only one thing that must survive there.
Because I'm so with teeth, because somewhere was spraying this few days.
That each still when we always going.
I don't know, just hanging tail.
But we couldn't do that, and that's an awful sharing.
That their problem.
Huh?
The junkyard could spray, that's their problem.
Now, and there's several options, right, so let's see what.
Let's see what the ditches do before making forty hours guns, you know, what they call, we'll get some.
Yeah, there were some drainage ditches along here, right? Yeah. Right at Sears and Waffle and right along there, sure.
They're bad, they're bad in the water.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, if you start to get these strange going and not have fully, you are, that would help alleviate some of the problems. And we do, we are looking at that. And you know, there is environmental engineers in here every, uh, Friday and mostly. And she rode around the last farm and especially in the leading high neighborhood and saw a lot of the problems and questions to be done. And I talked with her on that Friday, so she searched for that money, uh, and particularly the branch that runs behind my house. Some bags and things that, I mean, they look at, uh, as we speak. And so the town, different end, she rode around and just saw our water was backing up and flooding the whole. The hopefully, you know, some dishes are hanging out and they deep enough, get that water flowing. Uh, Commissioner Olson also has commissioned a, you all need to actually flood that area, that branch. And so we have this to kind of look at and see where it might be, uh, stopping that flow. Uh, we've been told was leaving down, somewhere down around calling an action, that's another issue that we're going to get wildlife involved in. So we are working on this, aware of. And so, uh, we did not collect a speech.
All the way back. I'm not too delighted. I'm not involved, the mayor broke him, like if he's.
Okay. It's moving the balance second, and the, yeah, members of the baby excuse, all in favor of our sign of that.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right, hearing none, most carries. Hope to get them some. I can give the most years of all, so.
Also, it's all perfect, Tom. That's a quick question for that, do we have a sleeper to clean the streets or do we, do we contract that?
Yeah, we're leaving the town right down down.
Okay, well, we don't, we don't, we're not able to sweep the street through the drainage, especially the culverts, drainage culverts. That's a pretty dangerous outdoors manager.
We said that, um, I'm trying to, um, I'm looking at my mouth. And the streets you're waiting, we fix that problem, but it should have a fee, right?
Ditches have to be cleaned, but I have noticed throughout the town, a lot of the sewer, sewer grates that the runoff goes into is covered in debris. And I don't know if we have necessary equipment to clean it and keep up with it, because it is, some of it is lack of maintenance. Not standing water necessarily, but when a lot of water hits the town, we just, our, our systems that are there to drain can't do it well because of the leaves and sticks and things like that. Here we have, related.
We're moving bottom second, the public hearing being closed, uh, and all in favor of our sign of that.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right, hearing none, moving right along the way again to, uh, the next.
The public hearing.
Public hearing, um, can I get a motion to close that public hearing?
Uh, so move.
Do we open?
It was open, made a fourth, we got closer, and closing it now, I guess I should explain myself.
Want to close public hearing?
Yes, sir.
My move, I'm saying that we close the April, uh, public hearing that was open being now, all in favor of our sign of that.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right. Hearing none, most carried, old business, seven point one, utility merger, uh, with CEO Sanford. Uh, Jack, do you want to take that?
I would just start my reflection right in the wood. Uh, we entered into an operation, uh, agency management agreement, is the city standard regarding western street plan expansion project in the twenty twenty three project, project in fact. That was to be designed for, I mean, the electric plant that was done on under in twenty twenty three. Uh, in that agreement, we agreed doing the building merger, and therefore we are there, there's a couple of things happening, we've done, uh, a lot of conversation, we've completed a couple of, uh, studies. Simple development fees and our rate study that we've completed. Sad that they didn't give us the same folks and, and make sure we met the, uh, mark, we get this merger agreement done. And so that's what we have in front of us, even, you've got three, uh, action items, uh, and the tax concern, you package, the action item will be approved resolution. Uh, of the board of commissioners of the town approving, you know, the bring, to merge the water and steam system with the town of Silver City and City of Sanford. Next motion, we think the early importance of adopting water and waste air system development fees that would be effective from March first to twenty twenty five. And last patching, we can prove the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, these schedule amendments. The water rates, which would also be available March first, twenty twenty five. Mayor, there's a bit of information in the package, that kind of summarizes what we're looking at this evening, business questions. Uh, I'm here, uh, Bob Hatman with, uh, as serving as our, um, government's coordinator, this process, he's the, the attorney. And Charles Rock, who frees Nick, was a part of that review team, see if we can, uh, help anywhere, any questions we have.
The, the SDF, there was a max and there was a number that we agreed on, so the, the max fee, I just wondered why it differed. Than what we agreed upon, with I think fifteen thousand five hundred total, from water and wastewater. Yeah, but then there, there's another number that's going out there, thirty eight thousand dollars and some change for the total on that to be a max. Does that mean that we cannot charge more than that? But we're going to go with the lower number as our base fee, right?
So, okay, cool.
Yeah, that's what we have, okay.
Yeah. I'm like the monkey, we're approved of the voting, the board of commissioners of the town of Silver City, Fort Carolina. Approving that interlock agreement, merge a water sewer system for the town of Silver City and the city of Sanford.
Thank you. It's been moved in progress second that we, uh, approve the merger, let it all in favor, let it be known by sign of that.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right, hearing none, most carried.
I'm hoping that we approve the ordinance adopting water wastewater system development fee, depicted March first, twenty twenty five.
Very good, sir.
It's been moved in progress second that we adopt the wastewater fee amendment, uh, all in favor, let it be known by sign of that.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right, hearing none, most carried.
I'm hoping that we approve the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, these schedule amendments to water rates, depicted March first, twenty twenty five.
Very good.
Been moved progress second that we approve the increase in the waterway. According to the statute, all in favor, let it be known by sign of that. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, most carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, seven point three pound, five.
Let me get there. Okay, so this is where we're also moving the consent agenda items as well, man, so we can kind of put this in together. So Sonic Industries provided the two signs. Images attached. The first one you will see, it's using the Silver City Delightfully Unexpected logo with the, what you see is the American flag at the bottom, that's, that's.
That'd be awesome, right?
Yes. And where you see the American flag, that is where the information would go, you can plug it in. Put anything you want on there, American flags, and put leaves following. Um, it's really neat. And then the second option would be using the town of Silver City seal. And again, where you see the American flag, that's where the graphics, that's where your message board is going to go. And the granite that you see at the bottom, that would be installed by the Chata Monument Company. And would match the building. And you can see. The one with the seal is a lot, it's more compact and a little bit shorter. The one with the Silver City logo, Delightfully Unexpected, it's pretty tall.
I like the same.
I like the same.
A lot of terms, too.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we would need a motion, yes.
And what is that? Is that Sonic City? That was, I would, that's, I mean. How do you not?
I'll, I'll let the market feel free to tap and believe, let it feel as though.
The move I'm expecting that we approve the mission board standing are all in favor, let it be known by sign of that.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right, hearing none, most carried. Also, I texted this is, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the price of the sign, which is.
Yes, so we have to go back to the front of the agenda, and Brianna is going to hand out the new, uh, budget ordinance says that we're going to have to approve each one of those.
Okay.
Nothing changed, you're right.
No.
Separated them.
Yeah, they're just separated before.
We've got my margin for each one.
Yes, sir. So the first, let's go ahead and do these in order. So the first one is going to be two oh two five point eleven, the sale of Carter Bank.
So we, most of the, the budget, a limit. Above, of maybe the vertical ordinance.
Yes, sir, I'm getting to it. Yeah, so what you would do now, Travis, since this is not in the, um, consent agenda, you would just say, I make a motion, or be it approved by the board of commissioners of the town of Silver City, that the twenty four, twenty five budget be amended. And then read the sale of their surplus property, that would be your motion now.
Be approved by the board of commissioners of the town of Silver City that twenty twenty four, twenty five budget be amended.
For the sale of surplus.
So the surplus property of quite a bit.
Thank you.
It's been moved in progress second that the wish we intended to amend the budget for the seventh of the corner bank, all in favor, let it be known by sign of that.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right, hearing none, most carried, thank you.
So the next one's going to be twenty twenty five, twelve, Landers Solar repaving.
I can move to amend the twenty, twenty four, twenty, twenty five budget ordinance to appropriate money to repay Landers Silver for second.
It's been moved upon the second that we, uh, made the appropriate amendment to repay Landers Silver for, all in favor, let it be known by sign of eye. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carried.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to amend the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget ordinance to appropriate money to install heat bobs in town hall.
Right.
It's been moved upon the second that we amend the budget twenty, twenty four, twenty five, to install heat bobs in town hall, um. All in favor, let it be known by sign of eye. All opposed having the same right, hearing none, motion carried.
Okay, so the next one is, is going to be for the town hall sign, the one Commissioner Hauser wanted to discuss.
Did we receive any, uh, estimates for demo and Paul Braxton?
It's not in this, we need to go ahead with what we got, not.
No, it was just, it was up for discussion because it's, it's around saving a lot of money, so I don't know. I understand that, but it's still money that we're spending. I didn't know if we want to spend on something different. The whole point I was trying to make is we have, we, we have a trade off. We can pay for something now, we could pay for something later, we can get this, this sign. We can do something else and that's all I wanted to discuss. We've had a lot of things that have come up here just in the last couple of months. It's a very large amount of money. I know the town wanted it, the residents, what's their concern for it? It was, uh, part of the, it was part of the master plan, was it not, for the parks or the, the downtown master plan? Which one was it? The sign? The sign was part of that master plan, wasn't it?
The sign was something that come from the community and then brought to the board, the board to look at it, and we talked about that was necessary. So I'm still trying to figure out where you're going with this because Paul Braxton, it's two separate issues.
No, I can figure you saying that.
They're not connected.
The, they are connected as, as far as tax dollars being spent. So I just didn't know if we want to spend something like a sign or do we want to potentially demo the building? Is, is that more important to the residents? Because that, that wasn't a part of the session prior. I don't think a lot of people knew how much this might cost. Forty six thousand dollars, some media is going to take the shock. I feel like that's a, an obscene amount of money to spend on a sign. I know it's going to be there for a long time. It is an investment, but there are other avenues that the town could take as far as utilizing a sign through third party. Be a church across the street could be done on Raleigh Street with a partnership with the private business at a much cheaper rate. And we wouldn't have homeownership, we could potentially lease it. We wouldn't have the maintenance, we wouldn't have the, the asset purchase, we would have much less of a burden, but there are still other ways to utilize this, way to disseminate information. We're also trying to hire a person to fill in the communications specialist. Most people you utilize social media, that's the best way to communicate to people, and we're not right now doing that. Because we don't have a position too. I think that's a really good avenue to spread the word about upcoming events.
I'm not going to disagree with you on your point, because there's some truth to that. But we're living in an age where a lot of our residents are seniors. They don't do social media. Um, and this came from people that tells us we never know what's going on. So even with that. Uh, you're still going to have that same issue. We no longer have, and I just put it out here, a, a newspaper that reports. On the ongoing facts of what the town is doing. So our, our public address systems are down. And this is where this board will be beneficial. There will be no doubt on it. It's on our main drag. People will see it on a daily basis. Uh, is it, uh. A, a little more than I would like to pay for it? Yes, but I'm looking at the return. What do we get back? And what we get back is people knowing exactly what's going on and eliminating that problem. The communications person and position was budgeted for and it's totally, uh, indifferent. And actually, that person will be utilizing this. We are currently redoing our website. So all of these things tie together to enhance Solid City and the surrounding community. So. You have to spend money. It, it's just a fact. Uh, Paul Braxton, on the other hand, uh, is a totally different entity that will be addressed at some time, but not tonight. Uh, we're here to talk the, the utilization of the sign and what it will do for our community. So I understand your concerns. And, um, if there's any other comments from the board, I'd like to hear them. And then we move forward.
Paul Braxton, um, I understand we're not voting on what to do with that necessarily, but it was, it was a, a sum of money that we have to consider how we're going to spend it. We do have a leftover amount of money from the sale of the Carter Bank building. I just, um, I'm not sure a lot of people would agree, um, residents giving that this is a good way to spend that money, uh, with all the other things that the city faces challenging, challenges. So, I mean, for example, we can't even pave our roads properly because we're not resurfacing them because we don't have the proper equipment. There's a lot of opportunity.
No, no, you're wrong on that.
No, it is.
No, it's not.
We don't have the right equipment.
Actually, the cost.
It is.
We have seen that a study here, and we do not have five million dollars to pay the roads in Solid City. We don't have it.
That's correct. We have fifty thousand over the life sign.
Fifty thousand.
You can do things.
Utilize the bunch you have in the best manner, uh, feasible at the time. If we had the money to redo the signs and the roads and everything else, we wouldn't even have a problem.
Well, paving roads, paving roads is something that we contract out, I mean.
We already discussed at one of the last meetings, we had this discussion about how much the sign is going to cost. Because I remember asking him, Kim, what did the church pay for their sign? And he said about that same thing. So that's been how many weeks ago? So we've had enough time to get input from people because they, it was discussed how much the sign was going to cost.
Yes, the board of commissioners, uh, made a motion and approved, um, with the sign estimate to move forward on design and a final quote. At, uh, I believe it was, what might have been the September sixteenth meeting, but the first of September. So that's why we initiated. Yeah.
Oh, I don't, oh, uh, uh, and see this, not, not my, but.
But, but we did already discuss about how much that paper goes and so, so there is any, anyone that had any grievance with what that notice would be spent for. They had enough time to, to contact one of us, then they may have. I mean, but I didn't hear anybody call that. I heard all positive.
Exactly.
I just, I felt like it was controversial item. It shouldn't have been on the consent agenda to begin with. And I, I think, you know, people should see how their commissioners vote on a particular item that is a, a very costly item. You know, if they disapprove, the, the ballot box will handle accordingly. So we can, we can handle it right now separately. Thank you for separating that. Uh, I don't feel like it's proper to be on the, the consent agenda, even though we did. Vote on this previously, but that was only to solicit, you know, what it would cost to install the sign. And I, I thought, I thought, maybe I misremembered. I thought it was about thirty thousand dollars.
It was, um, there goes an estimate, thirty five to forty five, so depending on the quality we wanted and the size. And they came out and did a complete site survey and the CAD drawings and everything, so, yeah.
You know, we haven't utilized other resources that are potential too, like a partnership with someone who already has a sign, who's willing to potentially lease it out. We never had that discussion. It is still an option, so the utilization of the sign could occur, but the town just wouldn't own the property. If that's something that nobody wants to discuss, that's fine. You'll make your vote and let's move on.
Moving that the board of commissioners of Silver City, um, began the twenty four, twenty five budget. Uh, to, to the finance.
Purchase of the digital sign.
There you go.
All second.
They moved upon the second that we move forward with purchase on the digital sign, um, all in favor, let it be known by sign of eye.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right. Hearing none, motion carried. Okay, next slide. Position change.
No, sir. It's going to be the new business. It's going to be the two hundred North Chatham Avenue, and Jeff will handle that one.
Hi, Jeff.
The American business. So, uh, this, uh, I was, uh, rented some two hundred North Chatham Avenue. It's, uh, uh, retail space down the town road across from the Chatham Rabbit. Only for a long time, I've been doing Sam and Sam's office, so we got some bearing behind it. So, uh, he never received an email, uh, he would see that about, uh, about the space being invaded, uh, by the police. And the mayor and I visited that site, uh, a few weeks ago, in section twenty seven, or, by the way, we're sort of here. Um, and what we come up with was an idea to share with the board, um, of a proposed use. And that basically is, and I'll just read through it real quick. I won't get into all the details there, but the proposed use will be a welcome center. Uh, information slash visitor center, also would house town of Silver City offices. Uh, one person that would be there would be our community development planner, it's, it's already hired. And a sixth, second suggestion would be, uh, a potential mainstream coordinator, uh. Town staff plans is ranging to the board here in a few months, uh, proposed to make a mainstream application. So we're putting that information together. Sarah is our, our, our main person, uh, driving that. So that would be tentative. If we get into the program, we're going to need a mainstream coordinator to do so. That would be those spots. Office hours, typical, we're talking Monday through Friday, nine to five, Saturdays, nine to twelve, uh, making staff volunteers and I'll walk down and have a dance. Um, in my notes, I put here verbally endorsed by two organizations, one is, uh, Solid City Merchant Association and the Silver Area Chamber of Commerce. Since then, they, they provided two letters. I think we laid my own address, uh, both from other organizations supporting this idea. Um, and, and I will say the market supported this idea a couple of years ago. Um, when you're popping it out, uh, after the Carter Bank, uh, that having a welcome center would be welcoming or, uh, encouraged by businesses that have these associations. Um, these, these are both markers in the letter and, and what it told me were to provide brochure and literature to help the business. Uh, at first, it was talking about recruiting volunteers and some of that I've seen, they would like to maybe even have businesses help them do a volunteering at this site. And, um, that's pretty good. The proposed use, some details of the property, that unit is, uh, six hundred and thirty one square feet. There's some roof and window repair that the owner has, uh, agreed to, uh, repair on page fifty two of my, of our packet. Uh, I've got here a little detail, some photos, uh, but there's also estimated expenses. And, uh, and then, you know, often we package, we attach a draft to your lease agreement that the owner provided to us. And so, um. Uh, more, this is a, it's an idea that, uh, the mayor and I put together and we provided feedback on the proposed use and the lease.
I think we would make peace of, uh, a vacant building. And it's been the center of town. Welcome center and ghetto and covering the outside.
And I will, uh, I, I just, I want to be clarifying one thing. Page fifty two, there's a sketch that provides unit D is the unit we're talking about. Uh, there are four of you that have their own water and sewer and land, so that is going to be leased out, uh, by others, or it could be an expansion potentially. Uh, on this site, there could be an expansion to, uh, unit C. You said unit B, there's a boy, boy or a girl, the triassic four lot. It's changing.
Well, um, well, um, I see that there's, um. Notes here, excuse me, about the roof. Um, the three quotes to replace the roof. Which, the roof has seven leagues. I worked in one of those. I worked in two O eight for many, many years. Um, and. I wonder, uh, like, what's the shape of the building itself? Are there other issues that, uh, have been disclosed or is it moving ready? Is there issues with any plumbing, for example, um, things like that? Has, has there been anything else disclosed about the shape of these spaces?
It, it's this, this space itself, we did a tour with, uh, Ms. Harris last week. She's planning to put a new roof on it. Other than that, the building is moving ready. Um, one thing that Jack mentioned is the Main Street Coordinator. Um, in order to become a Main Street designation, we have to have a visible presence in downtown when we send that application off. This is part of the driving force behind this. Our community development coordinator is already, uh, making inroads with all of the local businesses now. And, and putting together, uh, some information. And the welcome center, uh, is something that just makes sense to the degree I met a couple, a couple of weeks ago on. A Friday that had been here on a Wednesday. Could not get any information when things were open. And so they thought enough of Solid City to come out on that Friday to visit. Uh, I've talked with Josh, I've talked with the Downtown Merchants Association. We have some stuff in our surrounding area for those who may, I may not know. Josh has a operating cattle farm on the fringes in Silco. Uh, there is a Lima farm out there, and for those of us that grew up here, we have hot river springs, we have ore hill. We have a devil's trapping ground. We have things that the average visitor, we never know that was here. So what we're trying to do is to make sure that we are selling Solid City along with the, uh, the Chamber and Merchants Association. We were asked sometimes, ones asked the same question over and over by pretty much the same individual. And the question pretty much, what are you doing to support local business? As a move. So this would be one of the ways that we could have a imprint, a footprint on downtown for a normal cause. And I think that it would be fantastic for us to, to start that way. And, you know. Without vision, we, we're going nowhere. So you have to be looking four, five, fifteen, twenty down, years down the road of what you think Solid City should be. And I'm hoping everybody here is a visionary. And wanting to do what's best for, uh, our citizens and our community. There is a factory that I just found out the name, there's two hundred jobs in the, I think it's the Seans Building that manufacture, um. I guess patio furniture, leisure furniture, whatever it is. Even, I, I didn't know it was there.
What, what was this, I'm sorry?
Uh, my charter furniture.
Charter furniture.
They make target for the, um, hospitality.
Yeah, hospitality. See, we have, we have, uh, a, a company here that actually has a board relations. Part inside of it, to where if you're doing out, business outside of the United States, rather than contact one of the state agencies outside of the town of Silver City. You can go there and help you, uh, get your business because you have to be registered and to actually deal with some of these, uh, foreign countries. So just some of the stuff that we have here that we don't know, spent, well, you guys might know, I didn't know. Uh, to put it all on the one place to where you can get that information, I think is why. For the growth of this town.
Um, I'll ask a few more questions. Um, have there been any upgrades to the building in the last year and a half?
You say upgrades, what do you mean?
Has there been any upgrades to the building? Have there been any upgrades on the inside of the building? Has there been any work done on the building in the last year and a half?
I just say she's going to put a roof on it. That, the, the inside of the building didn't need anything. It needs a roof. The rest of the building is fine.
I, I worked there for many years. This is why I want to know if there's been.
I'm just saying. And we're not getting the whole building. We're getting, uh, a cat cori part in ways and that, those two glass windows out front.
I'm familiar with spaces. Uh, which is why I have these questions. Uh, my other question, have we looked at any other spaces or just this two hundred North Chatham?
That was a suggestion that came from the Downtown Merchants Association. This, I, my back was on the radar until this conversation was starting to happen. Think about its location and think about where it is. You have the Chatham Rabbit, which is almost become the hub of downtown. Everybody eventually lands there. If you have a welcome center across the street, I am due to point to it.
Yeah, I like the location. I do. I like the, the where it sat. Think it's prime, downtown, uh, very accessible, very high traffic. Uh, so I, I agree with that. Uh, my last question is. When we talk about staffing there, um, until we know about the Main Street Coordinator, will it just be the one person in that building?
It will be the, the, uh, community coordinator plus the people that staff the welcome center.
So there will be other people?
So we're looking to hire additional personnel to staff a welcome center?
No volunteers. Volunteers, and we have talked about that with the two supporting agencies that staff that are on the desk.
So we, we would be able to leverage and staffing from time to time have. So, uh, I just wondered, there's one person in that building who has a welcome center. If that person has to step away for any amount of time and there's no one there. You know, but how do we ensure that we have coverage to welcome people to the welcome center?
It, it is a good point, but when things are closed, they're closed. Downtown used to close back in the day at twelve noon. It was closed. Everybody knew that. So if you have to step away for a few minutes or an hour or whatever, it's just not open. I mean, if you, I, I can't put it any simpler than that. We're making problems where they're not problems. I'm just saying that it's not, it's a non-issue. Cause when things are closed, it's closed.
Okay. Why is the whole area highlighted, Jack, but it's only section B, the little corner? So C, D and A, that, that's not included. It is only B?
Exactly. They're going to be leased out or rented out or whatever she decides to do with it. Is that we didn't, it's, the whole area that you're looking at, and I'm glad you had did ask that question. B, C and D were, that's too much space. We didn't need that. But what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, that used to be, the B, like B and C used to be together, right?
It was one. They wanted it all. We don't need it all.
And, and just to keep going with the facts for me, with A and D used to be together too. And they're not even, they're separated.
I don't know if you could tell by the pictures, did you scroll and see them? If you can tell, maybe any new floor or anything. I haven't really been looked at it.
So the community development plan will move out of town, mom and son. What's the likelihood it will be awarded, um, NC Main Street Downtown Association or whatever it's called? Is that, is that highly likely, you think?
We don't know. It's, it, it's really how much you stack on the application, which is another reason for this. Every piece that you add to this application enhances your application. You're actually saying, hey, look at me.
We are pushing hard and working hard on that industry application. It won't be for a lack of trying.
Alright.
Very familiar with it. Jack, you've been involved with main trees and, uh, kind of those efforts for, for a long time, right?
They're looking forward to that's a, I said right direction. And allowing VAC and Sarah and others to work hard on getting the application together and getting ready so it may be sweet, be more approved. I think you put this in, uh, it's, it's good shape with getting, getting over.
Yeah, and having these faces will strengthen that application.
So, uh, at this moment, um. Well, Sarah's working on is we're trying to give, give you that, right?
But what we're talking about that. Yeah, like what you need with us.
Basically, I'm, uh, I'm looking forward to this idea. But there may be, uh, budget orders in terms of where it is, the ratio to get a budget order.
And, um, town staff time to, and way in time to review this commercial lease agreement to make sure. Um, the town is in a good place and, um, landlord, what the landlord does as far as repairs to the building. Are set forth and clear. Um, and all of that. So we just, I believe, um, coming back to the board of a second, the next October meeting. We'll have everything in order at that time.
I say yes. Alright, thank you.
Alright, uh, mayor I put on your table the founder, you know, whatever that says. So a couple of things I want to share with you, uh, regarding hurricane. If they already know about it, I just wanted to point out, there were two things I got from state and I thought were worth sharing to you and COVID. Uh, North Carolina work to manage and recommend that we refer vegan offers of innovation volunteers. And other services to this group called North Carolina Volunteer Organizations, acting as that. The website is N C B O A D dot org. Number two, you've got to run after the best release letter. There's a website you're there as well. Uh, it's got a pretty long, uh, address. It's basically A dot page, there is a dot com slash North Carolina donation. There's two places that you can be involved and I want to share those some videos. Uh, second third item is, uh, the fire department in, in Black Mountain. Chief Murphy called it today. Uh, they proved it's doing well. Uh, we got four firefighters in Blue Chief. Uh, they drove, uh, our, our angry trucks. They were asking, they just stated that, uh, uh, the folks is doing this. They're working a night shift. They started Friday, they'll come back this Friday. And, uh, they're at the main, they're mainly working at the main fire station in Black Mountain. Uh, and then lastly, uh, this fire prevention week, October sixth to the twelfth, and this year's campaign is smoke alarms, making work of me. Uh, and then calendar, or just runs over like what we got, second chapter event, October sixteenth. Maybe four in district five, October seventeenth, this is more mappy. October twenty-first, our next regular meeting. October twenty-third, downtown main street discussion. This is continue to deal with that mainstream, uh, application. Sarah's leading that. Uh, we're coming, uh, everybody, not just businesses, but, uh, the community. October twenty-fourth, uh, it's a, it's a, I mean, wait for a Christmas plant, project groundbreaking. That's gonna be a career talk on Thursday. Uh, the groundbreaking of our, uh, wait for the Christmas plant project. October twenty-fifth is Trump retreat and Friday night leaks. The twenty-ninth is a former Halloween community brand oven. This is at A B. This is the apartment, uh, project behind the, uh, the hospital. And December first, Christmas market and tree log. And December fifth is Christmas break. And, um, if anything, if anybody will leave these events, let me and Kimberly bring another beach signing up, uh, and says, you know.
I got a question. I, I saw the. The road a lot in there for the, um. Christmas market and tree line. Do we need to do anything for the Christmas present? As far as, um, three, seven, all that kind of.
Yeah, it's, it's in process. There's an application, uh, that has to be made similar to this, to the DOT, to the town solid city and to the county.
It is in process.
Yeah, we, we typically will put it on the agenda around November, the first of November. I've got it right on my phone.
Oh, we did, um, we have two large members and when we get to the last commissioner. I would like to set up something, uh, at a meeting site for Travis and, uh, Cindy. To actually, uh, you have community forum, making good.
Yeah, we, me and Sarah talked about that last week. So, uh, continue the process or just have many phones. But have one just for that or. Thirty-six and twenty-five.
So, so I wanna, um, remind y'all, October fifteenth, the Tuesday, the eight-thirty to ten-thirty AM. Uh, we sent out an email inviting and a text message inviting anybody that wanted, wanted to get. So along with town staff, mayor, mayor pro town, and I have Travis signed up, but I did get two extra. Seat tickets, cause I would like to drive those towns to the same table if there, I have any interest from any of the other board members.
I mean.
Okay, let me know. So that would leave me with one more spot. If any, would you like to go, Albert? Okay, that's my two spot.
As a resident of the Black Mountain, I never thought it's a hard say, but.
You are so helpful, Ma. After the committee, we, we were here, we sent them off when they left. We had pride with them before they left. They were excited group to go and they were chomping at the bits to help, so. Uh, we can be proud that this group went around and gave what was necessary. Um, to help everybody else. Uh, governing comments?
Mayor, I'm sure one thing and I, I even forget, uh, thanks you too, this great, you just sent me a text. Uh, we installed three thousand two hundred eighty six meters, four meters.
Okay, damn. The, the, on that note, the water complaints are. Coming down slightly. Uh, guys, the, the funny thing about these. Is if you got a leak, it's gonna find it. Uh, when the old meter man have let you got by, this meter searches it out and it shows up. Uh, and, and so that's caused some people some problems. They had to go and call partners, you know, please, cause they. Make you aware, there's a leak somewhere with the old one speaking attention.
How are they alerted? Are they called by town staff or something?
About.
About a leak if it's constantly dripping the flow?
Yeah, we put out door hangers.
And not only that, then, then the bill will. Go extremely in one direction. Can actually look at the computer and see it running in real time. So if you're at home, if you're here, if nobody's in your house and the water's running, you got a problem. Let's just see.
And what, once it's completed, finished, if I'm good, like, you can now, like, uh, app on your phone, see what you say.
Yes, exactly. So that's gonna be, you know, something really different and, uh, people are starting to read these. Cause I had a couple of guys telling me that they have actually taken the time to stand there and understand what this meter is doing. So I want to know some of their questions. Uh, uh, governing comments?
I just wanna thank the town for, uh, what they did for national night out. It was, I think it was, uh, well attended, uh, by staff. And, um, we're glad to see everyone out. Uh, the support from everybody was, was great, so, um. I just wanna thank, thank you all for all that you did. Uh, for us being able to revive the national night out and achieve the, he did an excellent job getting everything together. So I just wanna thank you all.
And if you got a chance to get a selfie with one of the officers, I found out later and there was a contest. Whoever got the most selfies with, with the community, not a prize. And so if you were asked to take a selfie. Uh, that's what you did whatsoever. I just forgot why. I thought it was that popular. I didn't know I was trying to even try to win a prize.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna second that. Uh, I wanna, I went, sorry. Went around several sites, um, on Tuesday night and we're just happy to see Peter back out. Uh, Washington Park was, uh, very lively. Um, and as well, as were other sites, but, uh, it felt good to get out and have our national life back out. Uh, have our national life back and, uh. Who goes to the town and, and who is department?
Uh, and the last thing that I have. FYI, October twenty-first, we will do a reception for Jack. We gotta get the particulars in the time, so his family actually can be a part of his, uh, uh, new job. And we just don't know the time yet, whether it's gonna be before or after, but. Uh, the ladies, uh, will let you know whenever we, if that we figure it out. Um, so, uh, you guys.
Um, so you and I have talked about this. I have an idea where I would like for each commissioner. To nominate someone in town that was a solid city in our community that does a lot for our community. And I would like for, uh, each commissioner, and think about that, nominate someone. Have them here and recognize them for what they do in the solid city. And we don't have to do everyone in this at the same meeting. We could, you know, in that two, one meeting, the next maybe. But I think we, we know we have a lot of people here that do a lot for solid city and they don't ask for anything in return. And I think it would be nice to recognize them. And let the public know and see and hear about the things that they do that they don't already know. But, but the condition is that they do live in solid city. Um, even though there's a lot of people that don't live in solid city that do, do help with things here, but I, but specifically for this now, someone that lives in town.
I think one of the TV stations did something. Was it called hometown heroes or something like that? Y'all remember something like that with a name like that?
Because we all know, I mean, we, we know more than one, but to start off, we have some. We have a lot of people that get involved and do a lot of things that they don't ask for anything in return.
And we need to move quickly on that because some of our people are seasoned. And we don't know how much longer they will be with us. Uh, that we really want to honor, so we need to get it.
And it's a shame that, that there's some of you.
So what I'll do is I'll have, um, Brianna develop a, some type of an application or criteria. And y'all can kick it around and everything. We'll send it via email. And so, um, at the, whenever, if y'all wanna start this as early as the next meeting with nominations.
So that you put in the packet.
Yeah.
Be ready for the meeting.
One more comment, uh, speaking of hometown heroes, uh, the mayor, I visited the board of groups for back week. Uh, and I just wanted to highlight some of their work. Um, hopefully they'll be in front of us for that soon. Uh, but, uh, I, I, I like, I enjoy the visit and I just kinda wanted to bring some attention to the board and the, but they need some community support right now. Uh, but they're doing good work over there. And report them, hear more about it.
We tend to, they got a plan for the next, uh, board meeting. And, and I learned a jack to that, and so hopefully they'll make a presentation on the twenty-first. Uh, because you're right, that is, uh, getting jammed. Didn't look like it that until we made everything. Alright.